I'm Jimmy Judd, I'm the current Executive Director of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission. We've got a fairly formal layout for tonight, I wanted to make sure we do our introductions. I guess the purpose of meeting tonight is to talk about the current state of our Joint Water and Sewer Utility, talk about the significant details in our 2017 budget development, how that's rolled over into our 2018, rehabilitation, expansion requirements for the next five years. Of course, that's when we talk about rehabilitation and expansion, we're talking about fixing the stuff that's already out there and growing things that need growing to continue to allow the community to do what it's gotta do. Order of the meeting tonight, we want to do some team introductions for the folks that work for us and with us. We'll look at, we'll do the presentation, go through all the details, and follow that up with questions related to those presentations. So if you've got questions, please hold them and we'll cover those at the end. After that, we'll take general questions, you know, anything relating to Joint Water and Sewer that you might have on your mind. And our team is, we call it commissioners, Don Elliott, Don Elliott is our, Michael Elliott as some like to call it, is our Chairman, Cliff Adams is our Vice Chairman, Steve Copeland is our, one of our Commissioners, Mike Roundings another Commissioner, Mayor Cornell Harvey is one of our Commissioners, Robert Bowlen is Commissioner, and David Forrester Commissioner. Our rate consultants, Andy Byrne, he's here with Stan Tech, Andy, we've got Bill Zeberts also with Stan Tech, Letitia's not here tonight. Our attorney is Charles Dormandy, I know a lot of him from over here in Island, probably know Charles from Paul Booth and Smith. Senior staff that we've got, I think most of them are here, John Donaghy, our Finance Director and Administrative Director, Todd Klein, our Director of Engineering, Hans Crosby, our Purchasing Director, way back in the very back, Jay Sellers, our Public Information Officer, and General Antagonist for me. Operations Superintendents, I don't know, let's see, Mark's here, Mark Riles, our Waste Water Treatment Superintendent, Kirk Young, our Reflections and, what do you call it, Systems Pumping and Maintenance for Waste Water, he's in the back. Billy Simmons, our Water Production Superintendent, Derek Simmons, our Water Distribution Maintenance Superintendent, Mark Hopkins, our Facilities Superintendent. And that's our team. Start things off with a few basic facts about our utility, the Joint Water and Sewer Commission was formed in 2007, we've got approximately 30,000 metered counts, 20,000 which are residential, about 10,000 are commercial. Water billing is based on water in equals sewer out, so whatever the meter says, if you're a water customer, we go by the meter. If you're a sewer customer, we go by the meter, with exceptions of a few of our industrial customers who have odd uses for their water and sewer that causes to have to meter them separately. Commercial customer, oh, let's see, our commercial customers also have a commercial impact fee separate from the other construction fees such as residential, where depending on the type of business, we charge different impact fees. The community's divided up into four basic districts that we work to, and that came from the onset of our operating three, but we've got the North Mainland District, the South Mainland District, the City of Brunswick, and St. Simon Island is our four main districts that we work with. Other vital statistics, we've got three waste water treatment plants, 10 elevated water towers, 14 ground storage tanks, also related to our water production facilities, over 4,000 fire hydrants, nearly 8,000 manholes, 157 sewer pump stations, I was corrected on that, not all of them are live stations, there's, there are only a couple that are actually lit, the rest are pump stations. 802 miles of water lines, 548 miles of sewer gravity lines, 173 miles of sewer force mains, and that's the lines that the pumps pump into, sewer pump stations pump into to deliver the waste to gravity lines downstream. One of the things to note is that a lot of our assets are upwards of 70 years old or older in some cases, there's a lot, lot of issues there in terms of need for repair. The cost to run our utility as a result is pretty expensive, we're spending millions of dollars a year just to keep everyday services going. Joint Water and Sewer background, current situation, young utility is still inventing itself. We're constantly looking at what we're doing, looking at the organizational structure, trying to figure out what are the things that we need to be doing to be better functioning, to provide better service, to be more efficient with our service, and to reduce our costs while maintaining the level of service that our customers deserve. We inherited a lot of issues, when the formation of the utility came, as a result of joining the county and city utilities, certainly there were a lot of issues out there that I feel like there was probably some people very glad to see that happen because they left their place and moved over to the utility, but you know, that's part of the reason we're here, to deal with some of those things. Direct customers represent a fraction of citizens in Blaine County. One of the things, as you noted, as I noted previous, 30,000 accounts, 20,000 residential, there's probably 85,000 to 90,000 citizens in our county. Well, if you do the arithmetic, there's two or 2.5 people per average household, we're talking about 45,000 to 55,000 people probably at best being served by the meter, so there's a lot of people out there who are not direct customers but are beneficiaries, because the fact that the utility is here allows the community to do so many things in terms of maintaining the quality of life, provide for growth, provide for just everyday life. Even people that come in from out of town, from outside our service area, they depend on the building or places they've been to shop, places they've been to work, to have service. Without us, that wouldn't be possible. Capital improvement plan for repair and replacement far exceeds ability of the customer base to fund it, we'll talk more about that. Clearly, one of the things we've got going on here is with decades of neglect, both in the city and the county, there's a lot of needs to rehab a lot of old infrastructure, to keep it in one piece. Certainly the technologies that, you know, were existent back in the day when lodges were the very best of the world ever then, but they weren't good enough, and a lot of them reached their logical life, the end of their logical life, and there's a lot to be done to take care of. Inherited issues, this is my laundry list, everything but the kitchen sink. We inherited a lot of old trucks and vehicles, solely for surely we're trying to get those things replaced so we can keep people out in the field doing their jobs. Fixed assets, as I mentioned, were old, we've got a lot of plants, pipes, pumps, tanks in poor condition, suffering from corrosion, tuberculation, or they were just poorly installed and built in the day, we've incurred a lot of maintenance issues as a result of that. Joint Water and Sewer inherited numerous contractual issues as well, in a lot of cases, things were contractually committed that wound up getting passed from the county, from the city, to the utility because it was related to the water and sewer utilities. Some of those contractual issues have been pretty onerous for us to maintain, and you guys have probably read some about some of those things in papers in the last few months to see where those, some of those issues are going. Some of the things you don't even hear about, but we're battling serious issues in that regard, almost every week. Personnel problems, certainly we inherited some personnel problems and folks that, fortunately, most of those characters have found better opportunities elsewhere, and that was one of the things that we struggled for a new utility with a lot of issues to deal with, some of the personnel issues that they started out with. Another issue, disjointed systems, because there was two different sets of distribution systems, water systems, sewer systems, they weren't built in the day with the thought of one day combining, so consequently, the synergies of, if it had all been mapped out to get the best out of what they were doing, certainly it would have been built differently. But as a result, we're now having to deal with it, we're trying to make the changes to make the systems work better together, to give better reliability, better resiliency, and long-term service to our customers. High debt service, we talked about that earlier versus a small customer base, $50 million we inherited in debt service when the utility was formed. A utility with this size, with 30,000 metered counts, and $50 million in debt, that's a pretty onerous amount of debt for a small utility to be trying to pay, make the debt service payments, and keep everything else afloat. So it's a major challenge, it's gonna be even bigger challenges if we go forward, have to borrow additional funds to take care of some of the other issues we've got to face. Growth pressures in four directions, one of the things I noticed after I got here was the fact that we're trying to spread the community in all directions, going out south, out west, out north, and there's folks trying to get a lot of growth over here, so there's people putting pressure on us at every turn to provide more capacity to allow for more building, more construction, more growth to occur. And certainly in recent Georgia Chamber of Commerce meeting, they talked about, if nothing else, it looks like we're gonna continue to see a large body of people move into this county because it's a desirable place to live, it's great temperature, it's practically a vacation community, and so a lot of people are still looking at this place as a desirable place to retire to, and we could be seeing a lot of pressure from that for years to come. Weak authority to manage was an early issue because the folks that managed the board in the early days under the early structure didn't have a lot of authority to make big decisions, they were barely able to keep the water flowing and the other stuff going the other way the rest of the time. Underfunded reserves, started out with just a few million dollars in reserves, considering the amount of wear in here, this out there, there was a lot of needs that $6 million didn't go very far to cover. Underfunded reserves for expansion, expansion fees were now, when we're talking about expansion fees, have been in the three digits, we just weren't accumulating money to offset the needs for future growth in our utilities to provide and allow for expansion. Water treatment plants in poor condition, again, because we were tight on money over the decades, our Dunbar, and particularly our Academy Creek, suffered from lack of reinvestment, like your car, if all these mechanical systems need routine maintenance, routine upgrades, and particularly if you're gonna try to operate a perpetual, if you've got a car with 200,000 miles on it, only way it runs is to pay a lot of attention to it, do a lot of maintenance, and put money back into it to keep it in good working order. And that's one of the pressures that we've had here, and unfortunately, we probably haven't put enough back into those facilities. Brief overview, we talked about the aging addition of fleet, I won't bother you with all the details, but you stick to this, we've got some pretty old, pretty worn out, and some vehicles with a lot of mileage, and we didn't even put the worst, because we parked the last two that were over 200,000. Operational challenges, certainly talked about this briefly, but we were facing replacement of pipe technology, a lot of old concrete, a lot of ductile iron, steel pipe, those kind of things, clay pipe, we suffer from pipe tuberculation in the water lines, corrosion in sewer lines, brittle transite concrete pipe in the system because of the way they install them, because of the nature of the stuff, any kind of movement around them, any kind of digging around them, they fall apart and break pretty readily. New technology is all plastic, they're starting to loop the systems from the technological sense, which gives us better resilience. Now, plastic before I skip past that too much, we're at the very last threads of life for a lot of the old technology pipes that are out there and old materials. As we go forward, we're improving the technologies as we replace the old stuff, and hopefully, not hopefully, I'm assured, based on our knowledge of corrosion and installation techniques and that kind of thing, that as we make those changes, the next four, five, or six generations of our community, we won't have to worry about the things we're fixing now, those things will be there forever and be reliable. Unfortunately, it's time to pay for it now, and can't put that off in a lot of cases. Elevated tower deficiencies is another operational issue we've got, one of the things that every community needs is at least a day's operations, operational water demand in elevated tanks. Why do you need that? If an emergency occurs, a line ruptures, or an excessive demand because of a fire or those kind of things, it's there to protect you against those kind of special needs. We've probably got a little over half, Billy, about half, what we need in terms of elevated tank storage, there about?
On St. Simon, about a third.
I was talking about community as a whole.
Yeah.
About half, but at any rate, so we need to be adding tanks to the system and keeping up the maintenance on the ones we've got, because we don't have enough to provide the kind of protection we'd like against those kind of issues. Lack of resiliency, again, we've mentioned the system looping, redundancy to supply and maintain service to our customers. Fire suppression, you know, we've instituted a hydrant maintenance system here in the last two years to make sure that the nearly 4,000 hydrants out, 4,000 hydrants out there get the maintenance they need, because the last thing you need is for a fire truck to blow up the hydrant, and open up that valve and nothing happens, or not enough happens. So one of the things we've gotta do is make sure we continue to do that, that was an issue, making sure that all of that got done. Water pressure, again, due to lack of tanks, has been an issue, or can be at times. System redundancy, we talked about, line sizing inadequate for fire protection, I think that relates to the fact that in a lot of the older neighborhoods and some of the more remote neighborhoods, the design feature of putting in a small diameter because it gets the usage, the bare usage needs for a community or a neighborhood served. But unfortunately, in the old days, before they had fire standards and design standards to make sure that we had adequate fire protection, they didn't size them up for those extra needs. So we've got a lot of neighborhoods and areas where we're served by small lines, not enough fire hydrants, the fire hydrants have to have a certain minimum size, I think Todd, what is it, eight inch now?
Eight inch.
Gonna have an eight inch line. When you're covered up with two inch lines, you can see where you're short on what you need to get the job done and protect our citizens. But these are examples of some of the things the guys face, our folks face out there. We have to go in and, this is supposed to be example of infiltration in manhole, see Palm's West, this is where water, groundwater comes in through the seams and through the cracks in the manhole. The upper right is tuberculation, exposed metal, particularly in the old ductile iron, cast iron, there, the, in years gone by, again, the technology and the treatment methods for water has changed, but in years gone by, they didn't put corrosion inhibitor in the small, in there to stop this kind of thing. And the corrosion inhibitor prevents the tuberculation, but at this point, we've got a lot of old lines out there in our system, a lot of them, made out of cast iron and ductile iron, that have this kind of situation. And while there's not a danger to the quality of the water you consume, where the real danger is, it doesn't deliver, doesn't allow us to deliver the level of water pressure, nor the level of fire protection that is designed for when they put those pipes in. Down in the lower left, they're looking at old transitive concrete pipe, and again, this is an example, looks pretty good on the inside, you can see how smooth walled it is, but clearly, the stuff is very brittle, the guys get out there and do a little digging around next to it, if they try to make a repair to it, what they find is, the repair tends to grow and run down the pipe because the brittleness of the pipe causes it to continue to break as they try to tie into it and fix it. Old sewer line before rehab, the old brick manholes, in a lot of cases, the corrosive gases from the sewer is eating out all of the mortar around the old brick manholes, and the bricks are gonna fall in, they either plug the lines or collapse in such a way that we can't fix them, so we have to go in and literally dig them up and start over. Operational challenges, operational challenges should say, rainwater inflow and groundwater infiltration, in the older sub-basins, we see 200 to 300% increase during a heavy rain. What is that? Rainwater inflow and groundwater infiltration, basically what that is, is in the old sewer lines, we have separate sanitary sewer and stormwater sewers here in our community. If there are defects in our pipes and our manholes and our system, rainwater from the surface can get into our system, fill up the capacity, it should be only consumed by sanitary sewer. Likewise, if there's breaks or cracks in those lines that are buried, with the water table as high as it normally is around here, except during a drought, which we've had pretty dry months since I've been here up until now, in the month of October when we had the hurricane, you get a lot of groundwater infiltrating into the system, and again, that fills up the system, causes us to spend more money to treat the sewage, but it also does nothing, takes up the capacity and makes for a more, makes the probabilities of overflows due to excess capacity more of a threat. And the last thing any of us want is no overflow of sanitary sewage, even if it is 90% water, we don't want it, and that's one of the issues that we're battling. Hydrogen sulfide destruction of our concrete assets, our manhole brick routing, and the metal pipes. I mentioned before about the corrosive gases, well, the sewage breaks down and creates hydrogen sulfide, which converts to sulfuric acid in the environment it's in, and that eats up the old concrete pipes that were put in there in the 50s and 40s and 60s, and it also eats up the mortar that's in around the old bricks, but it also eats up the exposed metal piping in the force mains and delivery pipes in the sewage system. So we've got some major issues there that are stacked up, waiting for us to do something about, and the guys that are here that work in the assessment area, Kirk Young and I don't know anybody else, they can tell you more stories about that, but there's a lot of needs out there, and they've got a laundry list that's pretty long of serious needs that we're really challenged to try to cope with. There's 7,700 plus manholes, the typical cost to rehab those manholes is $10,000 to $20,000 in current technology. If we go to something a little more exotic that would give us a longer life and better protection of those, we could exceed that by another, what, 10 maybe per manhole to go to the new HDBE? But that gets us into the more corrosion resistant, but even this is, the old technologies are extremely expensive, and we've got a lot of manholes out there that need help. 157 pump stations, sewer pump stations that, a good number of them have a lot of age, a lot of corrosion, a lot of issues, and a lot of maintenance. Since I've been here, it seems like there's a maintenance story going on every day, chasing one of the stations, trying to keep it running, and that's aside from those stations that people are screaming at us to make them better so the Lord can go through them. We talked about the three wastewater treatment plants, the fact that two are in pretty bad shape and needing major rehab and improvements, certainly the maintenance that the staff's having to conduct to just keep those two plants in good operating order, or to continue to meet the needs that they currently, or the services they completely serve, they currently serve, has been quite a challenge since I've been here, in fact, it seems like every other week, Mark's telling me about another $25,000 to $30,000, pretty much, another $25,000 to $30,000 we gotta spend on some of the can and pieces of equipment that's worn out, eaten up, or those kind of things. So there's some major challenges, and some of the technologies old enough now, we can't go down in the store and say, "I want another widget," they don't make that widget anymore. So these guys are having to, you know, fly by the seat of their pants and innovate and come up with challenging ways to replace those pieces. This is just another example of corrosion. This 30-inch diameter sewer gravity line, it was made out of concrete, was probably installed in the 50s, Kurt, about the 50s?
I would guess about there, yeah.
But if you notice, there looks to be a ledge built into the, into the concrete pipes. Well, that pipe, it's still reinforced pipe, concrete pipe, it was smooth walled, it was a perfectly smooth, straight pipe from when it was put in back in the 50s. At this point, the corrosive gases from the sewage that have flowed through there for years, as either way, the concrete looks like one of those things, three, four inches thick starting out, it looks like it's slicked out about a two inch thick in the places where it's still there, and there's places where there's rebar or steel reinforcement bar that protrudes through. I meant to try to get some pictures of that today, but I didn't quite get there. Just more examples of some of the challenges, fixing water lines, replacing pieces that fell on us in real time. Over here, it's just examples of some of the work, I think most of you noticed that we were putting in the project over on Fred Orica, we used pipeboard technology to put that in. By the way, his promotion to live over here, has that been a good outcome compared to the previous project, like what you? We're trying, we're trying hard. Capacity challenges, certainly we're trying to keep up with growth development here and there, it looks like now the recession has kind of turned around, at least in a small way. The demand for new housing in our community is really starting to jump up, and there's been a lot of pressure on us to really do more with that. Water sewer infrastructure hadn't kept pace over time, so we're battling the old stuff while we try to grow new stuff to keep up with what there is in the way of demand. Joint Sewer didn't have, did not have base and live station flow meters to measure availability of capacity. One of the things that, what this refers to is for a long time, for years, I guess, everybody was relying on the capacity that was there, or whatever the needs were in the way of new housing, new construction. There weren't meters metering the amount of sewage flows, so we didn't know what was flowing through them. We could estimate it, we could look at the runtimes, we could look at the pump curves and say, "Okay, this is how much we're getting out of the, out of the pump stations right now, but what is it really doing for us, and where, how close are we needing to do something more with it?" Well, now we can measure those flows, we're starting to put meters as part of a consent order, which is not cheap, but we're putting meters in on all of our live stations, starting out with our most critical stations, and we're now able to get a handle on what is going on and start to really evaluate in real time where we're at with conditioning and capacity, most of our live station assets. Capacity challenges, this is just an example to demonstrate to everyone, this is the TAP sales for the last five years, and if you can, you can see, even though I didn't put a line to it, there's an upward trend. I think this year is gonna be similar to this past year in terms of what the TAPS are that are going in, or the new construction that's going in, and thus the new capacity that's being acquired. Budget facts and significant challenges for 2018. So as a year coming up, a number of items have been on our plate. We looked at key needs, you know, I said earlier, we're looking at continuous improvement for our system. for our system, and understanding what changes we need to make to staff, to the way we're organized and structured, to be more effective, more efficient. With that, we've determined there's a few positions that we don't have that are very valuable, we've got to have to continue to progress. At the same time, we're looking at some of the positions we had budgeted, that were vacant, we're trying, we've temporarily at least eliminated some of those positions to offset the cost of the more urgent needs that we've got. And I mentioned before about the two plants that are in dire need of help. In addition, we've got some major line reconstruction that's got to be done to support the two SLOSS projects that were funded with the recent SLOSS that passed. We found out that we were short on budget based on some things that came to light after SLOSS, so we're going to be about three and a half million short there that we're going to have to come up with. And we also, the assessment folks that work for us, found out that the stuff downstream of the North Mainland project, the gravity lines are eaten up. In fact, that picture that you saw was a picture of some of that pipe. That project in and of itself is going to be another $11 to $15 million. That said, along with our treatment plants, we're going to be in the very near term in the market to take the last of our significant borrowing capacity, to issue a bond, or make a bond issue, that will allow us to take care of those plants, take care of those pipe needs, to keep the SLOSS projects going, and to keep those plants running. The thing about the plants is, if you don't have the plants, it doesn't matter what you got to pump it here. They've got to be reliable, they've got to be taken care of to be able to treat the sewage so that we can then discharge it. One of the other things we look at, again, because of the demand for expansion, and even some of the cost at the plants, which relates to maintain a recovering capacity that we've lost, not expanding, but recovering capacity we've lost because of conditioned plants, are going to be factored back into developer cost recovery fees, or as they typically call around here, TAP fees. We're going to be looking at that, we're going to be raising developer TAP fees significantly, and that's going to be a part of the issue we've got to do if we're going to grow, because that's where the money comes from, to do the expansion meeting. Rolling stock replacements, we're still trying to, as I indicated previous, there's a lot of needs, we're going to continue to try to, little bit at a time, take care of those needs. So that's one of the pieces that we, again, identified as a fairly significant bite this year, but it's, in the big picture of the overall fleet of vehicles and equipment, it's not a lot, but it's, it has an impact. Cost saving improvements and optimization, certainly the restructure we talked about in that first bullet, there's some things I can't, I can't take to the bank yet, but I'm hoping that our cost structure will be significantly better by the end of the year when some of the organizational changes are made, we start looking at how we're doing business and getting a few things done that will reduce our overall expenses, both in manpower and in mechanical resources. Legal fees and damage claims, one of the things we're also struggling with is, because we're getting sued pretty often over capacity, we're having a lot of legal battles, we've also had some kind of wild damage claims, I won't get into now, we talked about it outside the meeting, but we had to factor in some heavy-duty legal fees and damage reserves for the lawsuits that we've experienced this year, and may be experiencing at the end of this coming year. Personnel changes, we talked about that. The one at the top of my list is getting the Director of Operations to enhance overall efficiency of our system. What that means is, a person at the top of the operational pyramid, looking in and examining with a hands-on light, in a hands-on light, what's going on day-to-day for all of our operating groups, looking for the operational efficiencies. Where can we have redundant or flexible operational personnel? Where can we share equipment? Where can we reduce overtime? What are the things we can do? But we need somebody with our hands-on, that live in that environment, to be able to analyze it. We hope with some of the changes that can be made, we'll see this person's salary compact manyfold in terms of cost savings, eventually impact our rate structure in a very positive way. Planning and developing technical staffing to meet plan review and capital projects over time. Right now, our planning and construction group are literally flooded with new plan reviews and time required to manage the capital projects we can't afford, and we are trying to execute. Keeps them jumping. I see them in there after five every evening, I think there's a, and it seems like they're always running when you run into them, particularly out in the field, there's a lot going on. What we've looked at to help fix that is we've identified a couple of technical, three technical positions and an inspector to help with those needs. To offset that, we are raising a new development, plan review and inspection fees that we'll be putting on our developers in the community, similar to what the county does already, except this is going to be geared strictly to the costs that we incur to do those things. We're basing it on what we've been expanding based on the records we've got for that group, what we're doing with each type of project, so the rate structure will be geared towards the characteristics of any given project that come in and what's newly there. In addition, we're going to capitalize some of those personnel costs where it's related to oversight of joint water and sewer capital projects, we'll roll theirs, instead of it being part of the fee structure that comes out of operating revenues, it'll be a part of our capitalized cost and go against capital expense, on capital reserves. The next position we're talking about is a financial customer information service analyst to coordinate on our new software. One of the things we inherited was an old software called GEMS for our financial tracking and for our billing. The software is antiquated, it was never great, it didn't provide all the bells and whistles that customers expect today in terms of options to pay their bills, track their money, find out what's going on. So one of the things we're going to, we've done is we've moved to a different product, a product called Enterprise. And we're in the last steps of transition, and that should be coming online July 1. We've been working, and we hope to have a, one of our folks that's been, I guess, contractually working with us to help deal with the transition on a lot of this, converted to an on-staff analyst that we'll keep and stay with us to take care of all the transition questions and issues and glitches, while they perform some of the other normal duties that go on every day at our plant, as, I mean, excuse me, at the business office, particularly as one of the other customer service folks retires. So we've got a transition there that probably, some of that cost will be offset by our retirement. Operational flex staff personnel is being hired, and I think, you know, we mentioned about being more flexible and able to do things. One of the things we experience right now is because we're thinly staffed, some of the crews, and this is particularly for our systems pumping and maintenance group and wastewater, on any given day, you never know when somebody's going to call in sick, you're going to lose that crew for the day. You're going to have to split them up, do something, they can do fewer people. Because we literally have something for every person in that crew has to do. So you lose one, you're losing a functional part of your organ, your little crew, and they just have to wind up finding something else to do for the day with one of the other crews if they can. And then normally, they can, but the bigger issue is we lose flexibility to continue what was planned for the day. And that would go for, even planned situations where somebody planned a vacation, that kind of thing. So this is a key person we're adding, we'd love to add three of them, but again, we're trying to keep the budget increases down and try to keep our costs to a minimum. Electrician replaced contract staff cost. We're, this past year, or this current year, we're headed towards spending $175,000 to $200,000 for the year in contract electrician expenses. The issue there is that we, we have a, we have no licensed electricians on staff, so we wind up contracting that out. We have tons of electrical issues with our pump stations, our treatment plants, our, that's the biggest, booster stations, tanks, production wells, those kinds of, anyway, the bottom, the long and the short of it is, because they're coming out to respond to our needs during the day and even after hours on overtime, our costs there have been huge. So we're going to hire at least one electrician to offset a lot of that. We feel like there'll be a huge reduction in our overall cost versus what we're paying for the contract, because you pay a pretty significant adder on contract staff when you're contracting an electrician. Offsetting positions to see some reductions, not as much as what we've got going on, but we're holding off on hiring two backflow inspectors, and we've eliminated one vacant admin, we're going to consolidate some admin folks to manage what we do in a consolidated form for paperwork such as closing, opening, closing work orders, due ordering, the day-to-day timekeeping, those kind of things. So we eliminated a position there, temporarily at least, maybe permanently on that one. And this is just the initial scheme for our developer cost recovery fees. This is our initial fee structure. Later on that, we'll copy that and get it later, but that will be a part of our rate resolution this year. Developers will be paying their share of what it costs us to do business, and it'll take that off the backs of our normal rate payers. Capital rehab and pleasure plan 2018. We're going to look at our overall five-year capital improvement plan for rehab, critical needs that can't wait, that we talked about already, those are the issues we talked about for the bond. The fact is, we're anticipating a bond issue. And one of the things I'll say, similarly, we're going to be talking about the expansion needs and what's going on there. Slides. This is the list of projects we're currently working on. We're kind of all over the community working on these things. We've got some stuff going on over here, but it's really spread out through the city and through all four districts. There's the rest of our projects. Again, I'll share that, anybody that wants to. And this is just an example of the kinds of things we're doing, installing a force main. I guess this is the kind of work you'd see out there on Frederica, rehabbing wet wells, rehabbing lift stations, going in and making up rates for distribution piping. Commission approach to rates. Currently, rate payers, administration fee is one of the fixed portions of every customer's bill, a fire, excuse me, fire suppression or hydro maintenance fee of 75 cents, and then debt service charges to cover the expenses to retire debt from existing bond structure. Then there's the consumption charges, which is strictly based on, you know, how much water you consume. System expansion development, it's broken down into redevelopment, plan review fees we talked about a while ago, capital improvement fees, that's the TAP fees we talked about, and donated the infrastructure. Because one of the things we do is, in some cases, where we don't have the money to go in and do an expansion on a particular set of assets to allow for growth in a particular subdivision development, we've offered up an option, a policy that allows for developers to come in, if they want to build to our specifications, the infrastructure needed, to get them the service they need, we'll do a deal with them, allows them to build it, we inspect it, and then they donate it to us, and that gets them what they need, keeps the process going. Joint, just an analysis, quick summary of joint water and sewer funding. Three primary sources, user rates, cap improvements or TAP fees, and user-specific charges and fees. For example, we talked about the development review fees. Secondary source is SLOSS. While we got $15 million, which is a, is a big shot in the arm, it's not a big enough one, in a bigger sense, it helps, but there's an order of magnitude more of need out there, so it's, it's a source, but it's not a viable source, and we're really at the mercy of many other projects that are in need before we get to our point in the line to get some of that money. Debt is not a funding source, by the way, I was, I think I needed to make this point because a lot of times folks say, "Why don't you just borrow the money and get this done?" Well, again, like I mentioned a while ago, we're about to take our last big chunk of bond money that we can afford to make the debt payments on. The big issue is, when you borrow money, you've got to make those payments. It's not free. We'll be, we're just about to the point where we can't do that anymore, so for those that think borrowing is a solution, it is not. Looking at the 2017 and 18 rate structure schedules. For water rates, we see the admin fee, they're jumping from 606 to 757. Debt service per RU in Brunswick stayed the same, in the Glen County area, it dropped two cents per customer. Pile of water rates, you can see the change is there, the first 3,000 gallons is $1.36 per thousand, jumping up to $1.54 per thousand gallons. And likewise, it rests us down in the sheet, in your handouts tonight, this is one of the sheets you got that breaks this out. For irrigation, it's a different set of user rates. On the sewer side, it's a little flatter, but you're still moving from 606 on the admin to 757. Debt service, same for Brunswick, and it dropped three cents for Glen County customers. The volume charges went from $6.30 per thousand gallons to $7.15 per thousand gallons. There's no break or increase based on total volume or increases incrementally. Looking at the rate plan for this year and going forward, we looked at, for the average 4,000 gallon per month customer, we're currently at a rate of about $53.47. That's rising to $60.37. And in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, following the needs progression that our rate models and our long-term financial models presented, this is the direction rates would go, going up by 603, 521, 583, 406. Now, having said that, one of the things that we do, you know, we don't know until we get there next year at this point, where we're going to be, whether we're really going to be at that number or a different number. But I am hoping that some of the things we're doing right now are proactively reducing the rate or the expense structure that we've got to maintain what we do, provide the service we're currently providing. So it's our earnest effort, but again, we've got some huge challenges out there in front of us because of the nature of our system and the available funds that we currently Let's see, the city's five-year plan, similar analysis of the city's numbers, that previous slide was for the Glen County folks. This is what it looks like for the city of Brunswick folks. This is most I've looked from here, still on that. Looking at the five-year cap improvement plan for rehab. We programmed in our plan, four men for 2018, five men for rehab and rehabilitation in 2019, six men in 2020, seven men in 2021, and seven men in 2022, for a grand total over the next five years, 29 men. Some of those rate increases are meant to help fund this. But as I mentioned a while ago, we're going to be doing a bond issue pretty quickly. And the bond issue will be issued And the bond issue will be issued this year, this coming fiscal year, but the debt service payments won't start until the following fiscal year. And that's why the numbers started in 2019 for the debt serves, where we were gonna spend all of our money on capital projects. Now that we're borrowing to offset that, again, I don't wanna increase both, so we took the rehab portion of those bond issues and the rehab portion of debt service payment, we deducted it from what our planned capital reserve is gonna be. And then we took what was left over and looked at the priorities we have in our master plan or capital improvements plan for rehab and repair, and we just went through the priorities, taking the most important stuff to work our way up till we got to the end. And it's not quite a match, but it's close as we can get right now based on the projects. That may change a lot as we go depending on a lot of factors, cost of materials, what's going on with inflation in the construction industry, and we're under the advisement that there's a lot of work starting to happen in our industry, that inflation, just because there's not enough contractors to do a whole lot of work, is starting to push the price of what goes on. Similarly, in the expansion, we, expansion's gonna be paid for with TAP fees, and we did an analysis. These are conservative number of TAP fees, if you recall from the earlier slide that showed over seven hundred being sold in fiscal 2016. If you look at the numbers, we plugged the TAP fees in and we're using that times our anticipated new TAP fee rate of sixty-eight hundred dollars. Currently, we're charging thirty-five hundred and fifty dollars for combined water and sewer TAP fees. We anticipate that to go to sixty, the full cost of sixty-eight hundred. We've done an analysis of what goes into it, reanalyzed our projects, reanalyzed the number of houses or RU's each project would generate, come up with a fully loaded cost of sixty-eight hundred dollars per RU or per TAP fee. So those are the numbers there. Multiplying the number of TAP fees times the TAP fee rate, that gives you the number that you see on that third row. Again, taking the expansion portion of the bond debt payments out of that, it gives us the fifth row, which is our, what's left over. And again, we looked at our expansion projects to figure out, basically, taking the, the highest priority is, we understand it to be, and deduct that, make sure that they matched up, and we're in a little better shape here, we're matching up pretty closely, but again, we'll have to wait and see how things work as time goes on. This gives a comparison of where we are or where we will be relative to the surrounding communities. You can see, and I think that's in your handout as well, you see that Brunswick went from forty-nine up to fifty-six. You can see that Glen County as a whole went from fifty-three up to sixty, or will with the current rate structure plan. You can see, we're moving up towards the top of the list, and I'm adding out, we did update the other communities' numbers for this chart.
Yep, that's the good.
So that's current.
Yep, that's current as of today.
Looking at our combined cap fees or TAP fees, you see where we are now. You can see where we'll be when this is over. This is, again, looking at those same communities and seeing where we're at. We're pushing up towards the upper end, but again, we've got some heavy-duty costs out there that are screaming at us to do expansion, and we also got some heavy-duty costs screaming at us to maintain what we've got going on. In conclusion, Joint Water and Sewer Commission's implementing its master plan for limits of available funding, doing everything we can to stay ahead of breakdowns and major problems. Joint Water and Sewer Development Financial Plan to optimize the ability to execute our master plan. So we're looking at every way we can to tweak the numbers, tweak the fees, to make sure we push the fees back where they need to be, to borrow money if we can, where we can, to make us the most effective in doing the projects that are out there that are listed through the sources that we have. A significant borrowing will be required in 2018 due to condition assets and due to SPOS commitments. Organizational change, continuing to optimize mission execution, we talked about that, getting the right bodies, the right kinds of skills in the right places to make us more effective and efficient. Joint Water and Sewer is pushing new development view and inspection costs back to the developers. That, Joint Water and Sewer aggressively reflecting on outstanding overdue payments while reducing bad debt write-offs. What that's about, something we didn't talk about, but we've been doing some analysis of what's going on. In over the years, the bad debt or, I mean, the aged receivables, sixty days old or older that are overdue, we had a huge number, like on the order of two billion dollars. It's a lot of money. Staff is making a Herculean effort to pull that money back in. We recently changed our policies to allow for us to be a little more effective in collecting that money and prevent us from growing at that to those levels once we get that number beat down. Our goal is to knock at least a half a million off of that before into the current calendar year, but we're gonna continue to do that and hopefully get us back down to a reasonable number of two or three hundred thousand maybe by the end of next fiscal year. That's at the rate we've got it laid out. Joint Water and Sewer's meeting consent order and compliance requirements, that's something that we need to get into either. There's, some of you know that we are under a consent order as a result of a spill that occurred over here back in 2014. It has a lot of the requirements for us to do some things, spend some money, and we're trying to get all that done, but we're doing it, we're staying in compliance in that regard, we kept up with the consent order so far. But we're gonna continue to be working at that. Joint Water and Sewer is aggressively assessing improving infrastructure. One of the things we're doing, and I believe we were doing this before, the consent order, the Jay, excuse me, Ray Giuliani and the assessment group, we've been looking at our assets and really documenting exactly what we've got, how bad things are. And, you know, our goal would be to eventually have an exact condition assessment so we can tell you, well, we've probably got six years left over here on these assets, we've got two years on these right here, if we don't do something better right now today, any day they could go out on us. We're trying to get to that point where we have a good understanding of our assets so we can better manage our situation and demonstrate to everyone what our real situation is and the level of need. Here it is. Applause. Yes, sir.
I just sat through an hour of nagging, James. How did we get this far? Who's responsible?
I, all I can, well, let me, let me back up, not to throw anybody on the bus.
Try the wrong.
Huh?
Tell us who, who's responsible?
Well, let me, let me work through that for you for a second. One of the things that you, that you, I'm trying to be tactful, man.
Don't be.
One of the things that you'll see, and that those of us that weren't staff of Water and Sewer Utilities, is that raising rates to do things, to rehab, to stay on top of issues that are out there, has not been popular for decades. Elected officials frequently, I came from a situation where it had to be falling down around your ears for us to bring people out there to get something done. I'm just saying that throughout the nation, with some exceptions, I've seen, I can't even count on a hand the number, there's not a handful that I know of that really aggressively stayed ahead of the curve in terms of rate structure and doing the things proactively they needed to keep us.
I can see that.
Well, I'm talking in a general sense.
I'm talking about.
I'm working up to that. Give me just a couple more minutes. I'm not gonna take any more than I give you up there. But here, this was all run by elected officials up to 2007. And I'm sure they felt the same pressures and same threats, some paranoia over, instead of going out there and telling everybody what's going on and saying, we gotta raise rates because here it is, here's what's about to happen. The easier thing to do is not expend time on that, go out and build a bridge, pave a road, and tell everybody life's good and keep the water and sewer rates where they are. So in the past, that's been an ongoing issue, not here, but everywhere, almost everywhere. With the exceptions of those places where boards or water and sewer authorities ran the utility from the get-go. In those cases, they did, they looked at it from a practical and, you know, operational standpoint, did what they had to. Well, at this point, this utility was in that former situation where folks didn't wanna spend money on it. For decades, decades, both utilities probably didn't get the attention. You can argue about which got enough and which got worse, less attention, but the bottom line is, neglect for decades because the rates weren't there, because the resources weren't there, has led to this situation. I gotta tell you, I'm real proud of the people that I work with because I know them as a group, they all take a lot of pride in the assets they run in and things they're responsible for, so we're doing everything we can to take care of it, but, you know, it's kind of all those things where sins of the past have caught up to it. Is that kind of what you were looking for? Did I answer your question?
You, I walked around it, you didn't tell me who.
I don't know the names, I wasn't here. That was before 2000.
I just wonder how this happened?
Again, if elected officials don't wanna raise rates to hire the resources, to buy the resources, or reinvest in the buried infrastructure, what is, you know what the slogan is in the Water and Sewer Utility? Outside, out line. You know why? Because that's the way everybody looks at it. Oh, I flushed my mode today and it went away. I turned on the spigot and the water came out. But there's things going on dynamically out there in that buried infrastructure, and when the staff goes to an elected official, elected officials, and tells them about it, says, we need to split some money in here, if they feel threatened because of election coming up and they don't wanna raise those rates, you do the best you can with what they give you.
Well, I don't blame you, give.
I know, I'm just explaining.
I understand.
I don't know who the names are because I wanted to hear to know who the elected officials were that made the decision, said, Fred Superintendent of Water, you're not gonna get the resources. Yeah, they did. No one else can hear what you're saying.
Oh, they can't hear?
I'm sure they can.
My concern is that there was such negligence. What's the structure now so that we're not gonna have that in the future?
As I said, there's staff here. We all take pride in what we're doing. We're trying to move this utility in a positive direction, to make things right, to get things where they need to be. That's why we've got a master plan that says what all's wrong. That's why we're assessing the existing buried utilities to find out what's out there that we've gotta do something about when we get.
Jim, go to the commission structure. That's the policy section. The permission structure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, I'm sorry. Commissioner Elliot points out to me, the thing I was saying about the fact that commissions and authorities tend to do the right thing, we're in a commission structure now. These gentlemen aren't tied to or afraid of doing what they need to, to ensure that the utility gets to the best of their ability. There are limitations at this point. They can't fix everything because the monumental size of the need is so great, but they're doing their very best to support us, and that's another reason, I wanna say, one of the reasons that I like where I'm at right now in spite of the obstacles, those are opportunities for me and my staff. But I feel like I have a commission that's very supportive of the mission we see, and that is provide the very best service, do the very best we can to get the assets and infrastructure back where it needs to be, but it's not gonna be an overnight turn of switch on a day.
I understand that. How many commissioners are there?
Seven.
And where are the other five?
Yeah, Commissioner Ford's over there. I'm not sure where the others are. I promise I invited him.
No, I mean, I noticed our representative from St. Simon's here, Peter Murphy, but...
Yeah, well, I'm talking about commissioners on our Water and Sewer Board, he's candidate.
Jimmy, can we move to another topic?
I'm sorry.
We've just solved that and educated by on the commission structure now that's public information regarding the twenty-nine million.
There's trouble, why don't you take this?
Thank you, appreciate it. Regarding, regarding the twenty-nine million that you're forecasting in your budget for the next five years over R and R, I understand part of that helps to recover capacity that's being consumed now because we're treating rainwater infiltration and et cetera. What are you forecasting that will gain back in existing capacity?
That twenty-nine is for the big projects to take care of existing larger infrastructure. The SP and M group, the systems pumping, maintenance groups for collection systems, they're doing smaller contracts. And I know, correct me, didn't you tell me the other day that the project we did out on East Beach had, has projection of a forty percent reduction in INI?
We did a pilot program in the East Beach sector, what we refer to as the station in 2063, and we have seen greater than forty percent reduction in full infiltration. That's in preliminary report, we're waiting on the final report. The rough, the rough crunch numbers, and I haven't got that in fact to make sure that they're accurate, but the return on investment of this is something of the magnitude of approximately a year, you see return on investment for a project that was a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're looking to, as an organization, to benchmark the entirety of the actions that our RFPs are gonna do and eventually our whole system so that we can identify the low-hanging fruit and then back up.
So, thank you. Over here, Kirk.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, give me a second. Thank you. First of all, I'm gonna commend you on how well the Frederica project went and pull out this disruptive, and secondly, I wanna mention that personally, we've experienced really good customer service in the staff at Joint Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you.
You mentioned pressure to accommodate growth, and this perception currently, the rate payers, the ones that are funding system group projects to service new development, you also mentioned in your briefing that there's gonna be some attempt to recover some of those costs as well as cover future growth that's gonna be funded by developers. Could you extend on that a little bit more?
Yep.
Are we talking more than just tap-ins and inspections? Are we talking about major improvements? Because this is being done all over the country.
No, here's the thing. My attitude is that we're gonna use TAP fees and the revenues from the plan reviews and inspections, that's going to straight, that's going straight to our operating budgets to offset Todd Klein's, him and his folks, for doing the reviews, so that won't do anything to the capital picture. Now, as far as capital expansion projects go, we're collecting those TAP fees, and my vow is that we use those or the debt they pay for strictly for expansion. We're not gonna be taken. I can't, I know we have in the past expended rate payer money for expansion. I think even last year's TAP fee came in much lower than was requested initially, and for whatever reasons it got reduced. Well, we've gone to the max based on the analysis that we've got, and our commitment, mine and the commission's, is that we're gonna continue to do expansion as long as the funds hold up. When the funds run out on expansion, that's the end of it. If somebody's got a need and we don't have it in the bank, that's where it's, that's the end of it until somebody comes up with a pot of gold. We're going to dedicate user fees to rehab and rehabilitation when it comes to capital fees.
Okay, and the other question I had was, why were the tap fees level at 6,800 through 2022?
Well, and it's a good question, very good question. I'm glad you asked that. We talked about it. The thing is, we did an analysis to see how the cost of change will spend. Sometimes when you're projecting your tap fees, your engineering estimates of what it costs are different from the actual cost. So each year as we implement projects, we'll get a better picture of that. Each year as we see there's a different need for our monies, going a different direction, maybe the growth doesn't go where we thought it would, it goes a different way. So it's a different project, a different number of houses to be built. We're going to have to, we were talking about that today, the exercise we went through the last few weeks to get this number fine tuned, figured out, is going to have to be an annual event to figure that out every year. So it probably will change, but I don't expect it to change orders of magnitude, you know, a thousand here, a thousand there in that order. Let me, before I go on, and I just want to make sure, no, you might not have got a chance that if you had more, if any of you have more you want to talk about later, I'm hanging around, I don't have cards. You can follow up with me later if you'd like. Could you finish?
Huh?
I thought, I thought...
Yeah, those are my main questions, Jeff.
Let me get Jeff back here.
It's okay, it's okay.
You can't? Or he's coming to you in my room.
I just wanted to know, ladies over there where I am are still impressed with you. I thought it first that you knowledge of certain...
No, it don't matter.
And then I thought I might do your views and enthusiasm, but they said, "Oh, big time, it takes a real hand where it big time."
Hey, that's my big boss. Pick that up for me.
Most people here don't know what you know, what John and Tom know, John. But the answer is from 2005 to 2012, you said, I think 2007 or '08?
I thought it said when the legislation passed. I know there was a start back in '05.
But you're excused because you aren't here. There was a real dirt or void of knowledge and intent and capability of what was in Joint Water Sewer. When they combined Westlake and McCavity, it was kind of like, now that that's taken care of, everything's going to be well and done properly. And it wasn't. There was pre-optimization with building new buildings, and people wanted their name on the plaque on the front, and magically, we spent a year and a half talking about the drive-in and how essential that was to the new project. And so I sat through all this, I'm not saying that as a way of bragging or impressing, but I was there, and John was there, and he knows what happened. And these folks are too good to tell you how bad it really was for those who were entrusted with management at that time. You can go to the minutes, they're on the website, and you can see who the people were. Unfortunately, a lot of them are politicians. Nothing against politicians, you understand, but they're not engineers, and they couldn't provide any support to that group. And thank goodness we got a real board in there. And we should, everybody here should stand up and give an ovation to John at the time for having worked for a year or more at virtually no compensation to keep the thing running when nobody else could or would. And so there's a lot of folks that deserve great deal of credit. And I thank you for coming here and taking on this, what Trump might call a swamp. But your $3 million a year on the tap fees aren't going to get you where you need to be, I don't think. I think that y'all all know that, we've talked. And this group, I hope, is aware that you're, I hope, going to approach the local delegation and work on either getting it approved for SLOSS revenue to be registered to Joint Water Sewer or authorities. Or you're going to have to work with your county commissioners to take a bigger piece of the next SLOSS. And everybody here, just please be prepared for it because these folks can't get done what needs to be done with the amount of money that they can bring in through rates and through tap fees. And so there's a great big hole out there in their capital budget and expenditures in the future. And so everybody just be, be aware that's there. These folks are doing a great job to close that gap and to heal some of the sores and the things that were neglected over time, and they deserve a great deal of credit. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. Appreciate that.
I have two questions. See, first is, do you find yourself under any political pressure from the county commission, the Economic Development Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, or any other organization, or even within your own organization to expand the system to accommodate new development which bring in those new higher tap-in fees? Do you, you know, we're creating, we're not creating a monster here.
Now, the only, the only pressures I've felt in that regard is, it's been brought to my attention many times that, am I, no, I'm sorry. The Trade Winds property out of exit 42 is the only issue that I've had in way of pressure to generate assets for expansion. I've had no one outside of developers suing me for not providing the capacity where they thought they were entitled, put pressure on me. But from the politicians, from the local business leaders, the Trade Winds project has been a repeated issue. The SLOSS project is going to be a major step in that direction to get that project sewered up and ready to go for a potential industry that might come there. But other than that, I really have not, no one has come to me and saying, "You need to do," or "You need to do this." That just hasn't been the case.
My second question has to do with the great number of dwelling units in this county, some on Sea Island, many, many in the unincorporated parts of Glen County, where we have neighborhoods on antiquated septic systems. My wife and I, as an experiment, bought one of the Rosberg Villa properties built during the Second World War on tiny lots with septic systems. And we simply filled in our septic tank, and we're going to have to tap in to the, to your line eventually. But first, we're going to have to figure out how to get a line to tap in. Now, I've watched on this street where we bought a house, again and again, pumping trucks coming to pump out tanks.
Septic tanks, yeah.
Septic tanks. And I've looked at some of these septic tanks, they are failing or have failed. Now, some of these houses can be purchased for eight, 10, $15,000 because they're in such bad shape. But there is no economic incentive to ordinary folks who are not as crazy as us to, to do something to save these houses. So I appreciate the truth and the rest of your commission. You're stuck with a huge problem that you've inherited from a very bearish group of individuals who are only interested in saying, "Let's have more houses, let's keep the real estate and the banking industry strong, the insurance company's strong, let's have more and more development and overdevelopment." And of course, some of the expansion that was done 10, 15, 20 years ago, where lines went out into the boonies to pumping stations or lift stations that have not been used because the development did not follow the building of the line. I'll pass it on.
Was there a question in that?
No, I, that was not a question. That was me saying, I sympathize with what you have inherited. But what is going to happen when the people who really need to have septic systems replaced and can't afford it, or their landlords can't afford it, we're going to have a lot of people who are going to be out of luck in this community. So people are going to have to work together to get grants to make some of the improvements that you cannot do with your rate structure. I have no objection to you raising the rate pressure.
Just a couple of quick comments, even that one quick, related comments to that. I know you're not the first to come and talk to us about that. There's areas in our community where water supply is a problem because there are shallow wells that dried up. So there's sewer needs, there's water needs, there's a lot of community needs for existing neighborhoods that are out there. I know one of the things that we had where I was at, I was in a little bit larger city where I was at, and they had block grants of CDVG, Community Development Building Grants, or is that right?
Block grants.
Block grants. Sorry, CDVG, block grants. Anyway, they had an allotment every year that they got and were able to take that and allocate it to communities that were lower socioeconomic situations where they needed help to get those, that infrastructure in.
But are we getting that help here?
No, I was going, I was leading up to that. One of the things here in this community, because it's a small community, they have to apply for those funds every year. So it's, it's a continual process here to get it. And then there's other challenges in the community that, you know, I'm sure that county officials and city officials are having to deal with. It's a good application for that money to do the things you're talking about. I'm sure these neighborhoods are probably in the, in neighborhoods that would qualify. But, you know, it's one of those things, and one of the other things we talked about just around the office is for neighborhoods like that, if there was enough interest, if we could find a source to front the money and allow the neighborhood to get special fee structure or rate structure to allow them to finance improvements for their neighborhood, maybe we could work that that way. But that takes a larger group than just this commission.
Thank you. First of all, let me say, I think that this was a wonderful presentation. It's obviously very thorough. We've done a great job in describing the issues.
One, two, three.
I didn't say that, but, I'm kidding. If you live on St. Simons, you have a love-hate relationship with this whole issue because on the one hand, you're going, "Oh darn, we've got water and sewer problems that we need to deal with." And on the other hand, you're like, "Well, but I'm not going to have traffic problems that get worse and worse and worse." And so as you were going through the numbers, with the $6,800 and the 3.4 million, that's 500 new tap-ins in your budget projections a year. That's for the whole county. At the same time, we on St. Simons know that there have already been a very large number of new dwellings that have been pre-approved on the island. And I wonder, in your projections, did you, do you know what that number is of things that are pre-approved? Does your...
Todd, when we get, when we were talking to the planners, that was a number like in the order of 4,000, 5,000?
That were available, right.
Planted lots?
Planted lots.
Planted lots that are ready to be submitted for approval?
That, that could have a building permit pulled.
Now, you know, a good number of those are not in areas where there's currently sewer assets of any kind. Some of those are in areas where they've been relying on septic tanks to do their development. So that wouldn't, you know, but I couldn't break that out. We've talked about breaking that out because one of the things we've also been challenged with is, with the existing septic tanks that are on the island, you know, just like the ones in Mainland, there's a life expectancy to a lot. And I know I've been told that there's a fair number that have begun to fail. So we need to be thinking about that and anticipating and planning for how we take those existing homes and get them sewered up to the existing sewer system as opposed to using septic tanks. So there's quite a few challenges.
Jimmy.
Yeah. Just to be sure, what they're talking about are lots that somebody may come in one day. Not, not that some, you know, 4,000 people go down to Glen County or come to Joint Water Sewer.
But aren't there quite a few that have already been approved and they're being artificially delayed because of the sewer issue?
Not, not, not a ton. Really, for the island itself, we've just about caught up with a couple of projects that left on the south end of the island. We were just about caught up with the immediate demand. That's not to say that there aren't folks out there scheming ways to get, you know, poor stuff out there. In some of those areas, we're just about at the, at the brink. We're in the, operating in the, in the green, so to speak, but just barely. Excessive growth besides the lack of areas to develop will limit us in the south end of the island. And the north end of the island, we've got a little bit more capacity to go. But I think one of the things that we need to remember, it's not just the conveyance system. Remember that plant out there at Dunbar Creek? There will be limits there. But in terms of people stacked up saying, "Oh, if I had 200 more taps, I'd build them today," that's not out there. We're probably going to see, I'm going to say 150 or less taps that will be executed during the current 12-month period.
That's enough. And are they going to have a seat on this comprehensive plan coming up, the Joint Water Sewer? They'll have a seat on this new committee coming up for the comprehensive plan. I think that would be important.
I hope to talk about it forward soon.
Is it county-wide? Is that, is that the one that Mr. Hours is putting together? We've expressed an interest to be a participant in that. I think between Mr. Hours and Mel Baxter and Woody Woodside, they're going to try to make sure we're tuned in.
Well, I'd be glad to talk with Mr. Hours. I tell you, that's what we need to do because I think it's important, too. You know, I think everybody's tuning in more and more to the fact that you have to have growth done, where we consider all the factors, you know, the impact of growth, but also to, not, not just the immediate impact, but sustainability of growth. And with the new comprehensive plan that we're beginning into, Joint Water Sewer really needs to be at the table because even though I'm a county commissioner and I'm also a Joint Water Sewer commissioner, I can tell you that Joint Water Sewer is really one of the, it's, it's, it's our lifeblood here. If we didn't have any more development, we still have to have Joint Water. Not necessarily Joint Water, so we have to have, we have to have water and sewer. For the people that already here, so how we do a comprehensive plan have, you know, that's, that has to be looked at through the lens of Joint Water and to make sure we get that right. So, I mean, I'm on board, you know, making sure we, you know, that us over here at Joint Water are with our commissions.
I think we're working pretty good.
Yeah, and I want to take opposition of a gentleman, if you don't mind. A gentleman was asking about how everything got mishap. My opinion is that over many, many years, previous city commission, county commission, we're not the kind of stewards of everything that they're trusted with. You know, if people put them in office, they would just not be stewards. You know, by the people that put them in office, they were just not the stewards of, of the water and sewer system. They were set. And the city had theirs and the county had theirs. And I think both parties, not just one board of commissioners from the cities, or one board, or one city commission, but I think over many, many years, because some of the photos you've looked at with the damage, internal damage in the system that you saw there, it didn't happen with the previous board of commissioners, whether it was either the previous two, or the previous three. It was ongoing, but there was, in my opinion, there was no thought into reinvesting with the money they were getting out. And it may be because they never looked at the rate structure like we've been doing here. I've, I've been on this board almost six months, all those six months. And, but I can tell you what I, you know, in the workroom, trying to get these fees right, it's all about making sure that the services that Joint Water Sewer deliver out to the community, the people that's receiving those services are paying for, contractors are going to have to pay. There's a fee structure here. When they're leaning on our staff, you know, they need to pay. Starting it right. And I would Jeff Kilgore, in a, this gentleman, Tom Bowden, wherever Tom is, they really put their nose to the ground and since James come on board and, and started looking at getting this shift right because it was not going in the right direction in the immediate year when Joint Water Sewer was formed, when the voters voted to put it together. Been a lot of, there was a lot of slack time. The ball was not moved forward for a number of years. During those years, everything was still deteriorating. But the, the system had to be looked at, it had to be surveyed in such a manner that all the issues were identified, everything that you could put money into, that needed money put into. It's been a great job, you know, doing that. And I just want to tell you, I mean, all of this has really come about, this report would have never come about because he can only talk about these things because they know, we know, what kind of shape the system is in, not just on St. Simons, but throughout Glen County. And there is a path forward, but there is not, there's not there. And, and, you know, trying to prioritize where that money goes is really, it's, it's big decisions that haven't been made. And we've got the right people. I have contributed a whole lot to it. I've learned a lot in six months. But I think we've turned a corner, even if we don't have the money we need right now. But one other thing I'll add is that, you know, back when we were talking about putting a SPOS together over on the board of commissioners side, not here, I'll go back to that. I knew that Joint Water Sewer needs money. And I made the motion that we put 50 million dollars if we could get a SPOS passed and that Joint Water Sewer, they need money. I don't think we could have got the votes for the board of commissioners to put any more than that at the time because we have so many things that need to be done throughout the county. But I'm going to assume that there will be another call from the board to reach out to the community in three years to see if we can win a SPOS. I just want to assume that. It's up to the citizens. But if I'm still around and we do that, I'm going to ask for, it'd be another minimum of 15, 15 million, whatever, whatever board they would put. But Glen County, the reason, the reason I felt so strongly, you know, near marketing any amount of money, because I felt like previous commissioners sitting in the seat and I'm off the top of the desk, they dropped the ball. And while we couldn't go back on any of those good people, they were all good people. I'm not here trying to accuse anybody, you know, but managing a county is not like managing a business if you all want us to. But, but business people are business people. The corporate leaders you have here tend to be political and sometimes they look this way, too often. But anyhow, we needed, the board of commissioners had an opportunity, had an opportunity to step up to the plate and say, previous boards or commissioners dropped the ball, to say we can't help pick that ball up and that there's good people up here and get it going in the right direction. So, so we started that. Hopefully, with y'all's support, we can continue that. You know, it's been here three years, it's gone to go quick.
Well, I appreciate your honesty, number one. Number two, I hope you will spend my tax money the way you would spend money on your home. If, if you're following me.
Well, if you came back to my home and looked at my home and I tell you what, that I built it myself and I tell you what I put into it, you'll say, that's a guy who... Yeah. Every dollar I ever got, I earned. Like I know about some, earned some, saved some, and spent some. You don't spend a dollar. Anyhow, thank you, sir.
Mr. Brown, again, too much of a gentleman. I can tell you, actually, there was a chairman of the county commission who had a seat on the Joint Water Sewer in the early days, kind of perked to his service on the board of commissioners. He was on separate, he wanted water and sewer to his house, which was on 341. Joint Water Sewer spent a big notch, put a line out to his subdivision, and when they told him, I think the tap fee back then was like 750 dollars. When he told that man that he would have to pay a tap fee, he said, what in the hell are you talking about? I'm not paying a tap fee and I don't think that line is being used today. And, and so, that's the premise that went on in the early days and that's how we are where we are. And if you want to know who it was, you'll have to ask me after the meeting.
I, I agree with you and, and I know who you're talking about and, but, but, but I did say that, you know, before Joint Water Sewer, but even after, the next few years after, this, this was all mental, this was all mental, so wrong. But, but I agree with you, Jeff.
Hi, Mr. Kilgore. Um, you and Mr. Bowden and Mr. Elliott were kind enough to give a speak at the Women's Republican meeting a couple of months ago. And at that time, I raised a question about, was there actually $122,000 in unpaid debt with water bills? And y'all answered in affirmative that there was that much approximately. And I didn't realize that was just for first quarter for 2017. And after, on April the 20th, Associated Press article came out, it runs with news, it revealed that there were two to three million dollars in uncollected debt. And I understand that there's some big accounts, like the school board, some restaurants on St. Simons, that were not addressed in another article that you mentioned you were setting up a payment plan of $20 a month for those that...
Not for those accounts.
That's exactly right. But I didn't see any language addressing, what are we going to do for those accounts that can't afford, that have been skunked in by for a very long time? And if, if I can just make a couple of statements, I want to say that I think public opinion could be radically turned around concerning Joint Water Sewer if we had not seen things that has taken place since 2008, which included that $800,000 purchase of the lot down on Gloucester. And it's, it's very concerning, and like my dad says, living high on the hog, whenever Joint Water Sewer has an opportunity to move into a lot of vacant buildings in Brunswick and they choose to go into a two-acre facility that has 1,666,400 dollar assessed value today, and it's so big that it encompasses a landlord opportunity in CBS. So, we...
Which one are we talking, are we talking about the one on Gloucester?
Yes, the one on Gloucester. So, we see things happening that may not look brutal to us and yet we're about to encounter our fourth rate raise since 2012. And you can address any of the issues. One, I think my question is, what is the actual debt on unpaid uncollected water bills? And have you ever had a rate sufficiency study that came back and said, no, we don't need to raise the, the water bill?
Okay. Let me sit and get on this straight. The water sufficiency, first, going back to the, we did determine it was about $2 million. We do have a policy to address the, how shall we say, folks with, that are economically challenged, that have dug themselves a pretty deep hole. It's a pretty tight criteria for those folks to get the current bill plus $20 rate structure. If they owe a million dollars, if they fall into that income category, we're going to, you know, give them a break and they pay $20 towards that for the rest of their time. One of the things that we had to do was either let them pay $20 on top of their current bill or forgive that, forget it, write it off as bad debt because we'd never get it. We're doing, I think, the best to help them stay responsible for their own bills. As far as the bigger customers that owe us money, the staff has done a remarkable job going out and making phone calls, you know, sending the letters, following up, and we're starting with the very highest owing customers and working our way down the list. And I want to say, the staff meeting yesterday, over the last, John, what was it, the last six, eight weeks, top, top, last two months?
Last month, $200,000 almost.
It was $200,000 of that 2 million we'd collected. So, we're, we're really making, of course, that's going to slow down now that we're starting to work into the smaller numbers. Rate sufficiency studies, I have not been part of a, a utility myself that was in sufficient, physical or physical shape to do without rate increases. Even for a well-run, you know, I was telling you guys earlier that there was a, I can name only a couple of utilities I can think I've ever seen that really had done what they needed to over the life of the utility, to really take care of things and make sure things were needed to be. Even they have inflationary costs. If they give their staff a 2% increase because they're trying to match inflation, if they have an increase in power because the power company goes up 2% to 5%. There is an added cost to do business to keep the stuff going even at the same level if you don't increase the number of things you're doing through regulatory requirements or all the programs that occur. So, I personally have not seen that. And I, I can tell you, I have one or two instances I, I was telling you about as far as utilities that have forever been managed well. I actually know years that they did go with zero increase because they did not need it. And those utilities are investing or reinvesting in their existing infrastructure at depreciation rate that they're experiencing based on best practices or the generally accepted accounting procedures. They're doing what they're supposed to and they're making it all happen on the budget they have. And generally speaking, they'll have some increase in just to match inflation. But think of all the programs in place, they've already established all the resources internally. They need to do the things they've got to do to keep up with regulations and safety and all those little ancillary things that nobody thinks about that are part of being a good operating organization.
Thank you.
I mean, you're, you asked about a rate sufficiency study. Since 2007, the Joint Water and Sewer Commission has had an annual, not just sufficiency study, but rate structure study to make sure that people were being charged for, for water services if they were only receiving water or sewer services, if only sewer, to make sure that the costs for those services were charged correctly to the customer. Burton and Associates, these gentlemen sitting here have been working with us since, actually going back to 2007 on those issues, and has looked at it on an annual basis. The five-year plan that you saw today, that's, that is developed and updated every year.
Any other questions or is it time to go, celebrate? Well, if nobody else has got a question, I want to thank everyone that showed up tonight and appreciate your patience and your good questions. After all the good questions and the opportunity to answer those questions, again, I'll offer it one more time. Anybody that wants to follow up with me later, I can give you a card or we can stand around tonight and kill some time. Thank you all.